I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of April 19, 2016. Does anybody hear it all through these? Twenty-six and the special twenty-nine, I think it is.
I think so.
Okay, then all right, but keep going.
Twenty-six.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of April 26, 2016, and the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the special meeting of April 29, 2016.
I'll make those motions.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
That was really hard there. Hit the executive session. Financials, Resolution Number 16-062. Supplemental appropriation transfers included transfers from contingency to prosecutor's office for criminal investigator and ADP for contribution toward the building department and new world software update. Cash transfers included a transfer from the general fund to the court technology fund for portion of 2016 funding, and cash transfer from the children's services fund to the public assistance fund for reimbursement of administrative expenses. Incumbrances included a purchase order statewide Ford for a new animal control vehicle for the dog warding, a purchase order with Justin Ford for a 2016 Ford Escape for GFS, a contract with LB Architects for architectural services for courthouse basement for maintenance department, a contract with Brooklyn Industrial Services for the Coy Lane lift station for water resources, and travel encumbrances for the Commissioner's Office, juvenile court, and prosecutor's office. Vouchers include a payment of $32,720 to Northwoods Consulting for the annual imaging software maintenance for GFS, and a payment of $35,718.50 to Junction Auto for a 2015 Savannah truck, GMC Savannah truck for GFS. Any questions?
Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the Resolution 16-062, itemizing the financials for the meeting of May 17, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye. Okay, then I can report on the item I approved on May 13, 2016. Dave, you want to read that, please?
Commissioner's Office will report on the items approved May 13, 2016 by the county administrator, authorized by Resolution 16-005, under the direction and supervision of county commissioners. That was approved January 11, 2016, sent to ORC 305.30.
And what I did was approved and execute a service contract agreement with Trumbull Industries to perform valve insertions on the Royal Springs force main in Bainbridge Township for the year 2016 in amount not to exceed $10,000. No action required.
And then I think you sent a letter first.
I'm, I'm, that'll, that'll, yeah, that'll work.
No, the, like, license thing.
Oh, yeah, 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 we sent back requesting the hearing.
Okay.
On the license, just.
Okay.
Morning.
Say good morning. I'm here this morning. We did have a service contract at the Department of Aging for cleaning services. It started in October. We've been inspecting monthly and having multiple conversations with the company, but they are, they have been noncompliant with the duties we have assigned them to do, so we'd like to terminate the contract with them at this time as we're pursuing a replacement.
Department of Aging is requesting the Board terminate the service contract agreement between the Jogger County Board of Commissioners and Brenda Seeler, DBA Seeler's Cleaning, effective May 13, 2016, for noncompliant cleaning services.
Now, this would be in which area?
It's at our main center across from UH.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Bye-bye now.
Stay dry.
Yeah, try.
On the next one, I'm covering for Linda because she's answering the phone. This is simply a request from the Board to approve paid leave for Ellie Beam who works down in the Archives because she's been subpoenaed to appear as a witness in Jogger, or Kyogga County Criminal Court. She's got to be down there today, so, under our policy, when someone is subpoenaed, ask her to appear to continue to pay.
Question on that.
Yes.
Well, she's not going for jury duty.
No.
She doesn't get paid for this, right?
No.
As a witness, okay.
Your Cars and Records Center is requesting the Board approve a paid leave of absence for Eleanor Beam for the Jogger County Personnel Policy Procedure Manual, page 6.12, as she has been subpoenaed to appear as a witness in Kailua County Criminal Court.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Will we collect, and if she gets her witness beat, that comes back to us, or?
I'd have to look at the policy, honestly. I don't think she does because as a witness, as opposed to being a jury.
That was when I was asking, like, jury duty, do you get a check?
Yeah.
My experience, if you get paid from your job, then you sign the check back over to your employer.
Yeah.
That was what I was questioning, but I, as a witness, I don't.
We'll, we'll check with them, how much you know.
It seems like paying for testimony, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I.
Yeah.
Could be a good job.
There might be some odds that this would be.
Might be a career.
Yeah.
Morning, Joey.
Morning.
Good morning.
Been over in a while.
Slacker.
I didn't want to say it, so.
I know. This is another repayment from the hardship program that we no longer have in the clinic for down payment assistance we have, and so both mortgages have been satisfied, and I'm asking for the commissioners to sign off on the satisfaction.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute the satisfaction of mortgage for Jason Sabo for down payment assistance under grant B.C. 03026-1 for property located at 14766 North Thompson Avenue in Middlefield as the mortgage in the amount of $10,000 has been satisfied. And the Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute the satisfaction of mortgage for Jason Sabo for rehabilitation assistance under grant B.C. 03026-2 for property located at 14766 North Thompson Avenue in Middlefield as the mortgage in the amount of $21,835 has been satisfied.
I'll make those motions.
Second? Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, okay.
You don't want to carry that in the woods with you when you're at Grizzly Hunt.
That's right.
They'll say, oh, dinner bell.
This, this next one, I guess, just read. I think you all saw a copy. It's just a restatement of some numbers on a grant document per Department Youth Services recommendation, so it's pretty straightforward.
Pro Bay Juvenile Court is requesting the Board approve and authorize present to the Board to execute the FY 2016 reclaim grant amendment, attachment A, page two, to realign funds per DYS recommendations.
Can we, I'll make a motion.
Second? Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
First one's a rooftop unit down here, building eight, for the 911 room, that is a building room. Right now, we have a portable in there trying to keep it cool. We've had problems with it the last couple of years. This is open, will take away.
Just does that, it just does that room?
Yeah.
Real?
This one will, yes.
Okay.
This one will only do the 911.
About that big a room?
No, it's not. It's a one-ton unit we're putting in there, but they just put a whole much, they put a whole, you know, rack in there full of equipment.
It's hot in there.
Yeah, so we're like, oh, so, we're getting somebody to go back in and make sure what we have, we're working with. But twice this week, we were called up, caged out because the temperature got in there over eighty degrees. So, we come in, got to reset the portable that we have in there, or whatever, so.
It hasn't been hot?
Correct.
Yeah.
That equipment puts out some.
Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute the service contract agreement with Jogger Mechanical to provide install a rooftop HBAC unit over the 911 room, building eight, at 470 Center Street for the year 2016 in amount not to exceed $14,750.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
What kind of a timeframe are you looking at?
I don't want to push this.
Well, yeah, I was saying, it was eighty degrees last week and it snowed on Sunday. What's it going to do when it gets, when spring comes?
Well, like that room, it is on our building system right now, so what we'll do is we'll freeze out the personnel in the other offices, and it's just to keep that room cool.
Is there ventilation? Can you open doors and put a fan there or anything?
We've done that, but because of the, the nature of the room, the backup of the 911 room, we don't like to leave it open and unsecured, so that way people can get in and mess with all that stuff, and we don't want that. It's one of, it's, it's a backup, but we take that room pretty serious, so we'll work with Lou on that very closely. The next one is summer help. Mr. Kyle Spear and Brian, Brian's coming back to us in his second year, so that'll be great, so.
Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve hiring Kyle J. Spear into the position of full-time summer help 0101, effective May 25, 2016, at a rate of $8.50 per hour, period of 21 weeks, maximum 840 hours. Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve hiring Brian T. Granari to the position of full-time summer help 0101, to be effective May 25, 2016, at a rate of $8.75 per hour, for the period of 21 weeks, maximum 840 hours.
I'll make those motions. Second?
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
The next one's for Joe. He's exhausted, or sick indication, so he'll be coming back June 1st.
Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve a medical leave of absence without pay for the Jogger County Personnel Policy Procedure Manual, page 6.12, for Joe Mucik's, beginning May 2nd, 2016, and ending May 31st, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Next one is for Corey. He's been with us just under a year. He found another job somewhere else, working for a township for a little bit more money, so, been accepted over there, so he can start over there, like that, personally. And then I've also put in a request to advertise for a full-time maintenance worker for these replacements.
What is, what is, what is the rate be on that?
Four, thirteen something.
I'm just curious how this is going, a little over thirteen then? You know, you might want to add, Dave, I don't know how the other two commissioners feel about this, for things like accepting resignations. I think we could probably put that under your purview, and those things that you approve. We need to clog.
What about advertising for a replacement? I mean, if it's an existing position, I ran a by each, you say, do you have any problem with this?
The only value that I see in doing that is this is kind of like a public announcement that we're going to have a position available, so there's some value in that in the meeting here. I can go either way on that one, but, you know, relative to accepting a resignation or whatever.
Yeah, and, and what we saw recently is, you know, we had to have a special meeting if we wanted to get the advertisement out, if it was a critical position, so just think about that.
Yep.
And with that, you said, you know, I also like, because now you see that somebody's resigning, and I'm requesting, if I'm requesting, you're going to reply, you're requesting this position. So, something that was a week ago, or whatever, that Dave approved, so sometimes that going hand in hand.
Yeah, what you're, what you're saying is, this isn't an extra employee.
Correct.
Where, where, we're noticed or by this action, we're aware that.
Right.
An employee is leaving and we're advertising to replace that employee, not we're advertising permission to, and it's an additional, additional.
Yeah, in a lot of cases.
I, to me, I.
In a lot of cases, you're replacing the person who's leaving, and someone's going to actually make less money, so.
Well, we do, we do see those. I mean, I read the things that Dave reviews to see if you want to bring them to session, so we're, we're looking at those anyway. But, I mean, again, I can go either way, I just brought it up, it might be something that we can help, you know, accelerate the meetings and so forth.
I assume we're going to take one vote here. We're going to.
Yep.
Read them both at the same time, and however, I don't have a strong feeling, other than we should read it.
Maintenance Department is requesting the Board accept the resignation of Corey W. Shuff, full-time maintenance worker, 1904, to be effective May 27, 2016. Maintenance Department is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of full-time maintenance worker, 1904. This position will remain posted until filled.
I'll make those motions.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye now.
Hello, Jack.
Hi.
Hi, Jack.
Come on in here.
Haven't seen you in a while, either.
Not for a while.
You don't hear that on the bus much, hi, Jack. You hear that on an airplane.
Yeah, that's right.
Causes a problem, but on the bus.
On the bus, not so much.
Yeah.
So, what you got?
We are looking to fill the final part-time position of the driver, Edwin Hay, maybe interview him, seems like a great candidate, so we'll give a shot.
Good.
That's good permission.
No questions?
Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve hiring Edwin Hay to the position of part-time transit driver, 2201-1, to be effective May 23, 2016, at a rate of $13,050 per hour, fifty-seven cents per hour, with one-year probation period.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Clark?
Do we have one of our guys right now that's been working for about a year, and he's not well? We're scared, his wife hasn't given much detail, but doesn't sound good, so.
He hasn't been well?
No, he hasn't, for a couple of weeks now. Been manager of the hospital, and.
Oh, well.
Too much detail, and it doesn't sound very good.
Okay.
Just kind of a safe prayer for one of our sick guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye now. Do you want to read the next one? Do you want to speak to it, Dave?
I simply, an individual, especially the Commissioner, appeared with, and Joe Cattell, who is Commissioner Spitaleri's Nawaka alternate, that appeared, that there was a request that Commissioner Claypool be put on as Commissioner Spitaleri's Nawaka alternate for the Policy and Air Quality Subcommittee for the Nawaka. That's what this action is about.
Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board appoint Walter and Claypool as Nawaka alternate for Rastadale for, for the Policy and Air Quality Subcommittee.
I'll make a motion. Second?
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye. I have something I want to bring up. I, I, I mentioned Claypool and another issue, but you all should have gotten an email sent out from Anita Stocker, that are looking to have a tax abatement negotiating committee meeting regarding Burton Township and EEI. So, it says here, information will require, provided at this meeting according to request from EEI, a local business, for tax payment on their proposed 60,000 square foot new construction project in Burton Township. So, for this meeting, they're going to have one Burton Township trustee, the county auditor, a representative of Brookshire School District, a representative for the Ottoman School Career Center, one of the three of you, Anita and Dave Dietrichs. So, this is not a public meeting because there's no majority from any of the boards attending. So, they're looking, there's a couple of dates, they'd like to do it either next Tuesday at 8:00 AM, or next Thursday, the 26th, at 8:00 AM. So, I guess, if, if you guys can let, you know, decide, I don't know if you want to decide this now, or think about who should be the one that goes, but.
We need to have that scheduled.
Give those dates again? Next Tuesday, May 24th, at 8:00 AM, or Thursday, the 26th, at 8:00 AM.
Don't we have a meeting on next Tuesday, the 24th, at eight, at 9:00 AM?
I don't know how long this meeting is going to be, but you're right, yeah.
And it's going to be held where?
Yeah, we're right across the street in Anita's place.
No, I think I sit on that committee anyway. I've been attending the Department of Development meetings having to do with, with the tax zones and so forth.
Right.
So, I think I already sit on that committee. I was going to respond to Anita that I was going to show up, and not on Tuesday, that would be a tough one to be on the table, so I was going to respond to her.
Okay, well, just, yeah, I would just want to make sure.
If somebody's got a problem with that, then.
Yeah.
I think I already sit on that committee by virtue of assignments that we've been doing right here, so.
Apparently, it didn't have to be you, but I just wanted to make sure you all seen it, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can?
That's all I have.
Excuse me. Do you have something?
Yes, last time I was here, there was.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's a requirement, I'm sorry.
No, I, I understand. Ed Buckles, Troy Township. I, last time I was here, there was a discussion on the USGS water survey. You were going to have a meeting, Mr. Claypool, with those folks and report back on it, and I've missed a few meetings here and there, and I wasn't sure what the status was of that.
We had our meeting. I presented the findings to the commissioners, to a variety of people, so I've produced a document that I call my findings. You walk into a copy, and USGS is in process right now of setting up a, looking at setting up another agreement, so to speak, for us to consider, so that's in process.
Do we have a projected end date? Mr. Spitaleri was talking about February, and Mr..
Right, we were going to be doing it the 17th, but they tried to get something put together for us, as we had spoke last week, that it wasn't going to happen for this week, so we're hopeful that this, this week they'll have it together for next week.
Can I ask what your findings were in a nutshell, Mr. Claypool?
I don't know about a nutshell. I did a lot of, a lot of homework, which, about eight pages worth of findings that I had, but basically, Jogger County is the only county in all of Ohio that does the scale and scope of well level monitoring that we do. I didn't find any specific convincing, compelling evidence that it was necessary to continue as we were, we're currently doing it, and I looked for, that Evans, I've asked all the various stakeholders and so forth to, to show me where they could bake up, you know, back up their justifications, and again, in the findings you'll list, basically, there's three justifications that generally are given, but so far, I'm not seeing any convincing evidence that shows that we need to do this. Eighty-eight counties in the, in the state, and we're the only one that does this to the extent that we're doing it. Out of the eighty-eight counties, 25 are doing some level of well monitoring, most of the counties, 14 of them, are doing one well, we do 37, we're doing a third in the entire state. And there's some question as to whether that's required or not. That said, the recommendation to move forward was to create a temporary, and my recommendation was to create a bridge agreement to allow us some time to sort out how complex or simple or how we want to be the alter things. That's what I believe the USGS folks are currently working on, and then, I think, I was at the Health Department last night, I talked to Dave Dietrich, our planning commissioner or director, I appear, it appears we have consensus on the fact that there's, we're missing, there's an opportunity for improvement here. Most of the data that the county and/or townships appear to use are not well leveled logs. Most of the data that are used are well logs, which are done when the well is drilled, and/or other information, there's a 1994 study, which was very comprehensive, it is most often referenced relative to decisions that are being made either at the Health Department or at the county, or at the townships. That's, in reality, when you ask the question, what do you use to make decisions with, those are the documents that most often reference, as, as well as, if a development is going to go in, the developer's required to do a study to determine, and they bring in a hydrologist, and they determine whether they have adequate water, and so on and so forth. So, those are the primary reference material that are actually used. The well level beta is a long-term thing, it's not a short term. You don't do an annual, year-to-year, six-month, one month, whatever, analysis on well level because you have to see what the trends are. We've done this for 20 years. We understand what the aquifers are, what their nature is, how they perform, what the various aquifers are, at what level, and so on and so forth. We generated that understanding at a cost of some $500,000, and there's value in that. We now understand that. There is question, at least in my mind, after looking at this, in the continuance of that. The USGS, if you talk to them, will say, we can do a periodic health check, there's, you know, they gave us four options, one of which was to do it annually, we can come back and do it, you know, periodically. We, the county, can take over data collection, so we have some options in terms of then how we approach that with their guidance. We're not hydrologists, everybody recognizes that. So, we, the value that USGS brings to the table is their science. They understand the science, they understand the big picture. I used the term global at one time, I meant broad when I said the term global. They have a big picture view of things for the state and for the nation, and so on and so forth, but they're the ones that really understand the connectivity, the interconnection between various factors that we're considering, but their highest value is not coming out and going to a well and dipping a string down in a well and figuring out the well level. We can do that. We have very good people in the well, water department, they have a lot of skill and talent, they do that anyway, they know what they're doing. USGS has confirmed that we can do the data collection, they would accept the data, and so there's a lot of things that I can talk about. I boarded the Health Department last night for about an hour with some of the findings discovered. If we simply, and this is just my opinion, if we simply signed the existing agreement, we've missed an opportunity for, you know, increasing or enhancing what we're doing, increasing and enhancing the value of the data, the decision, the data we're using to make decisions on. When you make decisions based on old data and old criteria, then you miss the opportunity, you know, you might make a bad decision. The county website, believe it or not, is used, it was just presented the other night at a planning commission meeting. Our Director of Planning put up real link, the well flow information that's located on the real link, clear. You can go look at it, look up your property. You can go look at it and look up your property on Reallink. You'll see well flow information on there. That comes from the 1980s. Your well probably isn't flowing at that rate anymore. And yet we're using that information to make decisions on. And nobody is saying or using, making the disclaimer, well, this flow information is from the 1980s, so we might want to use a little windage when we're making decisions on this kind of stuff. So, um, I think we've got a great opportunity because we've been talking about this. We're close to it. We understand that there's some opportunity for improvement. And much of it's simple, much of it low cost, much of it could improve the cost, you know, and I, I look at the, every dollar that we spend in the county is my own money. And so when we're, when I'm spending county money, even though it may be a small dollar amount, you know, pennies add up to nickels or dimes to dollars and so forth. And so I want to make sure that every dollar we spent, we get some value out of it. And, um, we, there's a lot of ways. We've got a lot of testing going on at the municipalities. If we consolidated that with the water quality information, we're already collecting from the Water Department and consolidate that with well logs that are constantly going in. Bob, um, Weisdeck from the Health Department said yesterday, you know, if we consolidated this well log information we're already collecting and we hired some high school kids or some college kids to do a study and capture the rest of the well log information and put that in a repository, we have all that information. That is really what we make decisions on. The long term is general information, the well level stuff, and if we periodically do a health check, that would be enough, probably. This is coming from Bob and from Dave. I think we have an opportunity for improvement. So my, my suggestion is, let's give it three months to help. The Planning Department has said that they would take the lead on this. And it's the proper place, between them and the Health Department, probably, to do this. The other concern or the issue that I discovered that I have is that those who are pushing to have the existing condition to move forward have no stake in this game. They have no financial motive to make a good decision. We have a financial motive to make a good decision because it's our taxpayer dollars we're talking about. And so when somebody else gets to demand that we spend money, I'm not so sure that they're necessarily looking out for the best interest of the citizens of this county. That's just, again, my personal view on it. And so that's just something I, I use as a tangential piece of input.
So are we looking at three months before there's a resolution of this issue?
No, no, no. The USGS is right now working on an agreement. I'm not sure exactly what that's gonna mean because, you know, we're into the year. And by the way, from my, again, from my perspective, this is, that's a political position. We don't need the data. It's a 20-year study. Six months worth of data out of 20 years is not gonna have an impact on whether or not the wells are gonna have a problem in Jagger County. And so, um, but if, from a political perspective, if that's what it's gonna take to move this ball forward, I'm okay with that. Uh, I'm even okay if we reset the fiscal year. Right now, we're on a, for the USGS, we're on a federal fiscal year, which starts in September, October. We could re, uh, create the agreement to reset that fiscal year to align with our calendar fiscally. So we would have an agreement between now and next year, uh, January. That would be okay. We'd have a little bit more time to kind of sort through the details in terms of how we improve things. But, um, they're, right now, working on an agreement. We'll take a look at it. If we don't like it, we'll send it back or we'll ask them to revise it. Again, I'm speaking for myself and what I would say in this regard. And then we'll make some decisions. I think if you talk to the all the players, they would say, both Dave and, well, the Health Department Board, the Planning Commission Board, and some of the other players that have been involved, um, I think that they would say this is a healthy conversation. That they're, that they're happy that we're doing it. They may not like the fact that we didn't, we're not, we're missing six months worth of data or something. But, um, I think that most people would say that the benefit in this is we've now recognized there's some opportunity for improvement to improve the data that they're making decisions with, and they like that. And so we're gonna move this forward as rapidly as it makes sense to do that. And, uh, there's been no harm created in this situation and there may be a lot of benefit that comes out of it depending, so.
Have you put a deadline on the USGS to get back to you?
We don't put deadlines on USGS. That's a whole separate organization and they, they operate within the constraints of their, uh, and again, there's no, there's no pressing need for this. It's not like we're, you know, tomorrow, we run the risk of a well stopping working. That's just not the reality of the situation. So, uh, the risks are nominal, or in fact, there is no risk from my perspective. And the benefit or the upside to this whole thing, um, is there. And so there's no real pressing need to force this into a situation, again, from my opinion. And it's gonna happen. It's moving along. It's gonna happen in a timely fashion. But again, you're working at government speed. It's a little bit like when I was down in the islands. You worked at the island speed. So we're working at government speed here and, and, um.
All right, thank you. I would like a copy of that.
Sure, not a problem.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Before you guys, before you take off, just have something for you to sign. We, uh, remember the wild, you know?
Oh, yeah. Oh, the dwarf.
Yeah.
The dwarf.
There were a couple of people and then I also received, um, dresses.
Once you sign that, then, then we'll be adjourned, right? These are really separated. So this is the doggy stuff, right? Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. I thought you were talking about the deer picker. Yeah, I don't need to take a third time for something. Thank you, gentlemen.